Interesting to see.
That's a good word. We'll go along.
Oh, Bentley and Anna were just close pals.
I will call the meeting to order and we'll have the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Huffman.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. Dixon.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Seaworth. And Ms. Noah.
Here.
Okay, are there any additions or anything we need to add to the agenda or to delete from our agenda for this evening? We will follow the agenda then that has been distributed to us. We have a statement that I need to read because of the pandemic that's been going on for the past year. There is a continuity in government for the town of Luray. This meeting of the Town Planning Commission is being held pursuant to the April 13th, 2020 ordinance for continuity in the government of Luray. The town manager shall read the names of the commission members that are present and identify those who are electronically present. The town manager is responsible for receiving public comment in advance of the meeting, which may be submitted by mail, email, phone, or hand delivery by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. In-person attendance and comment by the public is also permitted, subject to the limitations of the most recent executive order and phasing guidelines that have been issued by the governor. This meeting can be viewed live on the town's Facebook page, and a recording will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Minutes from the meeting will be posted on the town's website after being approved by the commission. Okay, we do have the minutes from our April 13th meeting. And you may note on page two of the minutes, in the second paragraph, the motion there was to approve the code amendment to section 517. And that was agreed to by a vote of seven to zero. Anything else that we need to note from our minutes from April 14th? Move accept as presented.
It's a second.
All those in favor? Okay, we have a place on our agenda for citizen comments. I don't think we have anybody signed up there, but we may have on one of the items for public hearing. We'll get to that in just a little bit. May Frankie.
Oh, yes, sir. Splendid to have you.
I try to get them to wait for you, Frankie.
Glad you made it.
Me too.
Okay, again, on the agenda, we have a place for citizen comments on a general nature, but we did not have anybody to sign up for that spot on the agenda. Unless we miss somebody that just wants to talk about something in general. Okay, all right. We do have a number of public hearings, and we will move through those as presented on the agenda. The first one involves parcels that have been divided in zoning in town. The staff identified a number of parcels that were part one zone, part another zone. And those property owners have been notified and asked to consider making their property all one zone. And this was advertised for a public hearing. Again, our property owners were notified, and it is before us now to consider this change in the zoning. Anything else, Steve, that has come up on this?
No, sir, the parcels that the owners responded favorably to request the rezoning is provided to you with the split zones that were currently on the property, as well as the zoning that they had requested the planning commission consider for those parcels.
Okay, I will open the public hearing on this matter. And again, we don't have anybody that's signed up to speak on this one. Officially close that public hearing. Any discussion from the planning commission? Again, this is something we've talked about for several months, and all the property owners were notified. And as Steve said, the ones that we have listed here have agreed to change the zoning so that it's all R3 or B1 or whatever the zoning is to be. If we're ready, then we'll take a motion.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I move the planning commission recommend approval to the town council of the code amendments to the supplementary regulations and signed sections as presented. Is that the right one?
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Seaworth?
Yes.
Ms. Noah?
Yes.
And Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Okay, second matter for public hearing. Some changes in the supplementary regulations and zoning ordinance. It's really just a couple of sections here that were changed, dealing with temporary construction or storage trailers, and requirements for fence installation. And also includes in the sign ordinance, a definition for a banner, an allowance for temporary signs in the right of way. Any further information that we need on this one?
No, sir.
Again, this is something we have looked at and considered for a few months, and it's got to the point where it's ready for the public hearing. I will open the public hearing on this matter. And again, there's no one who's signed up on these amendments here, so if there is anybody, we'll be glad to listen, but we didn't have anybody sign up. Okay, now officially close that public hearing. Any other discussion or questions or anything that we need to consider?
I have a question. Banner and the feather banner, two different things. Is there a time limit on either one or?
Feather banners are identified as a temporary sign. Give me one second to locate that.
And under feather banner, it doesn't say temporary, so that's why I was... Banner says temporary.
Okay, okay.
So I was confused.
The intent is, is that some stores, before they're able to obtain their permanent sign, put a banner in the place of that. So in order for us to say that, yes, you can put a banner up, we needed to incorporate a definition into the town code so that we at least had some recognition that that's a sign that has been requested in the past. And we wanted to incorporate into the code so that it was covered.
But feather banners, I thought feather banners were capped at 30 days. Is that correct or not?
I believe so. They're somewhere in the code, and I do apologize not knowing off the top of my head what I should add, but... I'll have to check. Can't find it off the top of my head.
Yeah, feather banners, I think, should be capped.
So you said 30 days?
I thought that was the... What they... For a banner, would there be a time period capped?
Typically, as being a temporary sign, there is, I believe it's 45 days.
There is one section here that says, temporary signs authorized by this subsection shall not exceed six feet in height and shall be removed within 30 days of the settlement or lease of the property.
I believe those, well, and I do apologize, I wasn't prepared to address any of these questions. Maybe the council can look at that. If it's to them. Yes, sir.
I would like to see some kind of cap on having a temporary banner. Or if it's not temporary, it's permanent.
Some of them do get a little shabby looking at.
Is there a mechanism to enforce this, Steve?
Yes, sir, if a sign is in violation, we send a notice to the property owner about whatever issue might be associated with it.
In the section on temporary signs, it says on a lot, where there is a business that is new, closing under new management, or conducting a special event, temporary signs, blah, 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 may be displayed for one continuous 45-day period. In addition, one feather banner of not more than 14 feet may be displayed for up to 30 days. So there are some limits. If there's a new business, one that's closing, one under new management, or conducting a special event, I guess like a sale or something along that.
July concert or?
Yeah.
So then after that 30 days, they could take it down a day and put it back up. Are you ready?
Good question.
Well, it does on the first part of it. It talks about the new business or one that's closing or under new management.
Yeah, this temporary signs, it says, for one continuous period up to 45 days in each calendar year.
Yeah, yeah, that is there, yeah.
Eight to 1.6.
So maybe, maybe in that last sentence there, where it says, in addition, one feather banner of not more than 14 feet in length may be displayed for up to 30 days in a calendar...
Each calendar year.
A calendar year period.
See it, Steve?
Eight to 1.6B.
That accomplish what we want to do there?
I think so.
May be displayed for up to 30 days in each calendar year.
That is the intent, correct?
Is there other discussion or questions on these changes? Nothing is ever easy when it gets to signs.
We talked about it for years, years.
Yes. Just when we think we've got it, we don't have it.
We don't want Vegas.
Are there other questions or anything else we need to consider at this time? Then are we ready to move on this?
I move the planning commission recommend approval to the town council of the code amendments to the supplementary regulations and signed sections as presented.
Second.
Second.
I would only suggest that we add the...
With the minor improvements.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Seaworth?
Yes.
Ms. Noah?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
And Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Move on to the town council. Okay, the third item for public hearing, concerns an application for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at 402 Luray Avenue. We had information and talked a little bit about this last month, but officially, it comes to public hearing before us tonight. And maybe I should just say at this point that the planning commission here conducts a public hearing, and we will make a recommendation to the town council, just like we've done on these other matters. That is a recommendation from the planning commission to the town council. Town council has a final vote, and that would probably be at their next meeting in June. And on the matter at hand, we have the definition for a lodging house. We have the special use permit application. We have information on the property itself. And it has been properly advertised in the Page News on April 21st and April 28th. Any other information, Steve, before the public hearing?
No, sir, adjacent property owners were sent letters, and the applicants are...
Okay, I will open the public hearing then on this matter. I know the applicants are here. Is there anything else that you'd like to present at this time?
Maybe we'll defer until anyone has a question.
Sure, sure. Okay, we do have some people signed up to speak on this matter. Mr.... Is it Shoemaker? Okay, okay. Ms. Shoemaker, then.
The only reason I'm here is the letter, but she lives directly across, and my name is too...
Ms. Shoemaker, if you could come down and...
Right here?
Yes, ma'am. And then let the commission know your name and address.
My name is Roxanne Shoemaker. Well, the reason I'm here, I'm not trying to make anything, you know, argue with people, but I've been here 17 years, and I've seen a lot of stuff, but it's just going to cause a lot of problems. There's no room, and my neighbors are here. They don't, they're not a ward either, and it's just going to cause a lot of problems. And I can't see it happening. I don't want it, and my neighbors don't want it either. And we got that imagination station, and it's, that traffic stays busy. And I couldn't believe when I got, I said, here we go again. They tried to do it with his other house across, and it's ridiculous what this town does. And I don't understand it. It's just, it's a tourist town. They don't care about people. They just do what Main Street wants, and that's it. I'm just mad, and that's basically all I have to say.
Ms. Shoemaker, what problems do you think would arise from?
Traffic. I've been here over 17 years, and I've seen a lot of stuff.
Is a problem in Luray?
Yes, it is. You can ask my neighbors, too. But Ms. One Back He...
How much traffic do you think this would add to your?
Too much.
How much is too much? Another car?
Especially on the weekends, and you got that imagination station. This road stays busy, the Luray, constantly. And it's irritating, and it's just going to bring more people in. You don't have people, you know, strangers, and I live right across from it, and I don't want it. I already been here, what, six years ago, about another bed and breath is right across from it. And it's ridiculous. This town only cares about money-making. It's just a tourist town, and all they care about, Main Street, and that's it. I've been seeing stuff happening. Things need to change. That's all I have to say.
Appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. We have someone else signed up, and I have to apologize, I can't make out your name. I know, I know Harry McKenzie, but who's?
James Davis?
Yeah, okay, James Davis, okay, yes, sir.
My name is James Davis, and I'm at 406 Luray Avenue, and I go by Eddie. And I've lived there for 33 years. That's a long time. And we have a good group of neighbors and everything. And I met Chris one day. We were both doing yard work, and he seems like a nice fella. And I'm sure that he and his family would be good neighbors. But however, they're not going to be our neighbors. We're going to have different neighbors every week or every weekend, and who knows who they're going to be and how they're going to be, and we just don't know. And I'm not real thrilled about having different folks coming in and out and not knowing who they are. And I'm not, don't know about traffic, and I don't think it would affect that much, but just being the group that's been there for all these years and then not knowing who's going to be next door to me after being there all these years, it's just a lot of uncertain things that... And as you say, you get older, you resist change, but, you know, and I know change happens and things happen, but this one, I'm not in favor of. Simple as that. Just uncertainty of who's coming and going right next door to me.
Mr. Davis, if someone could sell the house right next door to you, and you'd have new neighbors tomorrow, so what's the difference?
Well, that's true, but however, if they're there, they're going to be there for a while. And granted, we could have issues then, but...
Could have more issues.
But the odds are, we wouldn't. We could adjust, but we could have all kinds of problems, different problems every week. That's all I'm saying. So, and I'm sure they're nice folks, and I know that they're in the business, and I'm not holding that against them. It's just, right next door to me, I'm not in favor of it, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Harry?
Harry McKenzie, 403 Luray Avenue. Basically, he just said, I mean, you're in a school zone, I mean, residential. Is this going to change the zoning? Is this going to make our property taxes go up? I mean, there's a lot of uncertainly things as what's, you know, going to happen. Is it going to open the door for other people, you know, to do the same thing that what they want to do? I mean, and then what's it going to be then, non-residential? I mean, more or less, Eddie basically just, I mean, you know, said it all. And, you know, on me, with me, I mean, my, he, my, on my opinion, this was his goal to set out to do it, to do that, see? So, I mean, if you would have come around and maybe speaking to us, maybe before, you know, everything, you know, maybe that would have been a, you know, different outcome or something, I don't know. But, I mean, you're, like I said, and there's, I get up at 3:30 in the morning, I go to work, and there's a lot of issues up there that need to be addressed now. We, and it's like, you don't know, it's like Mr. Davis said, you don't know what kind of people is going to come in there. They don't do background checks on nobody. I mean, and, you know, so, I mean, basically, I mean, I oppose, I mean, I'm against it, too, so...
That's true.
You know.
I hear your point, but people who can spend money to purchase a rental for a weekend and pay what these people...
Why in a residential, why in a school zone?
Would want to pay, you're probably not going to have the problems.
And like I said, what, you know, what kind of people is it going to bring in? Because they don't do background checks on them. What kind, what kind of people?
But these are property owners that can do what they want with their property.
I'm not trying to bring out the whole, you know, Page County, but we already have a drug issue in Page County now, and like I said, they don't do background checks. So what kind of people are you bringing in? I mean, that's...
Sir, do you, do you think the Mimsland does background checks for their guests in their hotel?
Is that a school zone?
We have...
Is that a school zone?
We have all kinds, all kinds of situations where we have people visiting our town.
I'm just, is that a school zone? Is that a school district? That's all I'm asking. Is amended?
It's not, no.
That has nothing to do with this.
It's the same principle.
No. It's, you're in a residential area, is that a residential area?
Steve, how many Airbnb's we have in the town limits currently roughly? Do you, were houses?
Several, yeah. There are several, we've issued a number of special use permits. I couldn't give you the exact number, but it's probably 15 to 20.
I mean, just...
In the boom field?
No, just in the town limits.
Yeah, but I mean, but are there any in the boom field?
We had, we had one on Blue Ridge Avenue that was there for a number of years.
And that blue house just around the corner from where I live.
Are there, does the police have any statistics on Airbnb people who've come in and rented that have had calls? that have, have had calls to that residence?
No, sir. I don't know that we've got any statistics. I can check with, with the police department if, you know, the planning commission would like me to.
I mean, I just think if it's an issue, it could be an issue.
Most of the people come into town and they just stay trying to get away and they keep to their self. I don't see where, that, that's just from what I've seen and going and staying, I've stayed in them before too. Everybody wants to get away and keep to their self to get rid of the hustle and bustle from what I've noticed since.
And basically, people just are there to sleep and the rest of the time, they're busy with, with tourist things, not, not even there. They're gone all day.
I mean, you could have a wild, you could have a wild neighbor and how do you know that too? I mean, well, I know, but you never know.
They could invite friends over and they, those friends you have no control over either.
All right, let, let's have the owners.
I'm Chris Halsep. My wife Julie Halsep, Audrey Caroline down there. Thank you for coming out, the warm welcome. If I didn't get a chance to meet you, I apologize. I was a little afraid to come to your house because I didn't want to meet my maker, but we did try to get around and say hi to folks as we saw them. So, I apologize and I do look forward, no matter what, the opportunity to chat with you guys if I do get a chance. As I told you, you know, if we do this, we want to do it with our neighbors in mind. We do have one over in the valley. I think you met my neighbor who came over and they've had zero issues whatsoever and we've had, I don't know, 150 some odd reviews that, from all of them that said, you know, we were, it was a great place to stay, very friendly, we were responsive, we had no issues whatsoever. But to your point about, do we do reviews, or I'm sorry, are there background checks? Yes, there are background checks.
No, there's not. I just stated...
Airbnb will take and verify your ID for anybody who stays there and also we personally, there are different ways that you can rent an Airbnb. If you'd listen, sir, I'm happy to talk to you. And I'll have to talk to you later on as well just to clarify anything, but you can either open your Airbnb up to where it just automatically books anybody who wants to. We, to your point, made an investment in the home. It's our, we paid for it. I'm not trying to throw away $200,000, some $1,000 to let drug addicts come and stay in my home or to let a bunch of college kids come and stay in my home or to let a bunch of, you know, whoever stay in my home. We generally have only ever let families with kids stay in our homes and that is really because that's what it's made for. The city zoning doesn't allow you to have more than six adults, I think is, or, you know. So, we would never have that anyway. We wouldn't even have the bed space for that if you've ever been in that home. It doesn't work for that. So, really what you're looking at is you're having a bunch of families potentially come in who are going to spend a whole lot of money in downtown Luray or, to your point, yes, it is about downtown Luray, I guess, but the whole area. And as far as your property values, I would say that if you're going to look at statistics, it's probably safe to say, and I'll get this for you if you prefer it, that it's going to raise your property values because you're not going to see a property, that property that's going to go to hell. I've seen pictures of that property before it was fixed up and it looked like hell. I'm sorry, it did. You know, so I'm going to guess that it looks a lot better now than it has in a very long time and will maintain that. It will look like that. It will look better than that because we're just getting started, honestly. We've just really got the property. So, I would say on that, I would not worry about your property value going down. It's going to go up. I will give every one of you my personal phone number, that if you ever have an issue, call me and I don't live 45 minutes away from here, but I can come up. We also have two lovely ladies who live out in Rileyville, who we worked with for a long time, who come over and work with us to keep our, our house clean, to flip it, whatever, and, you know, to make sure that the sheets are changed and it's clean and they let us know if there's any issues very quickly. And we'll give you their phone numbers too and like I said, they're minutes away if there's an issue. And I would say that honestly, if it did become too much of a problem, we're not in this, we're not interested in trying to fight a battle day in and day out for forever. I got two kids, I got a job, I got a life. You know, we're just looking for our next thing after we get out of this crazy rat race that we currently live in, so we're trying to set something up. To that end, I would say, if, if it's too big of a hassle, you know what? We'll, we'll do it somewhere else. That's fine, you know. We want to do it in this community. We like this community. We want to be able to support it and do good things. Absolutely.
In this town, there's, you go down Main Street, there's a lot of bed and breakfasts. The problem, he and me, we live right next to each other, but he lives right next. It's just, to me, it's an ordeal. I know what you're saying. That house sit there, yeah, but it wasn't that bad. They fixed it up, no, too long ago. But when you live here, you live there, you don't have parking, you don't have the space, you're going to get people in there. I just don't find it, and it's a resident area. See, that's what people are not understanding and that's what Harry is trying to explain to you. I just don't want it here. I've been here over 17 years and I've seen the stuff goes on in this town.
I understand you don't want it ever, nobody wants anything that they haven't had or seen, but as far as parking...
You don't have the room, but I'm saying, you don't have the room.
We, we, we have three spots. I, I've sent the pictures, you've seen the pictures, we do have them. We're happy to reconfigure that parking however it makes you the most comfortable with. If you prefer that we have parking on the other side, then we, well, I'm not other people who did whatever.
Okay.
Well, I live here.
Okay, I, I think we've, we've heard the points. We've, we've been glad to, to hear and we've, we've heard your points.
Thank you.
Nobody listens.
I think, I think we've been sitting here listening. Don't tell me we don't listen. That's what we're here for. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing because I, I think we've heard the different Any other discussion?
I just, you know, just from personal experience, I mean, my family has a property on Mechanic Street, which is in a residential neighborhood, two doors down from where I've worked for years and they've had it for VRBO Airbnb for the last six years. Not once have they had an issue at all in six years. You know, we, my family in Richard's bus lines, we transported people to weddings and things. We had wedding guests stay there. Sometimes wedding guests can tend to get a little rowdy. We never once had an issue there because it's not, I was kind of interested, because it's not on the river, you tend to get people in the residential areas that have families with kids because families with kids don't want to stay on the river because they're afraid, because you take your eye off a three-year-old for 10 seconds and they're, they could be in the river. Again, just my personal experience, what we've seen, it's not my property, so I don't have any dog in the fight, but just have some family that's done that and we've never once had an issue. And the neighbors surrounding them have never once complained. Again, they were given the number of, of the people that own the property. They haven't been called, you know, and again, as far as limited parking spaces, you know, we have two parking spaces there. They can't have more than two cars, you know, and there never has been an issue of that. It's easy to see as the people are sitting there because again, I'll go by there every day when I go to work. But, you know, just putting it out there for people that live in the community, this is in Luray, it's on Mechanic Street and it's, in six years, has not been an issue one, one time, but, you know, that's just my experience.
Well, my, my experience, my experience with the, a bed and breakfast just around the corner from where I live, I've never heard a peep out of those people.
The blue house.
The, it's quiet, they, they come and go, they don't cause a problem. And I think this place has three, three parking spots, right?
Yes.
So, I don't see any problem with the parking at all if there's three spots.
I really appreciate the comments of these respectable gentlemen here and, and understand exactly what you're saying and I tend to, I want to echo what Brian said over there. I work in tourism and follow situations like this all over the state. Yes, in places like Virginia Beach, there have been some problems, but I think with what I heard from the, the gentleman here, I, I really think that's not going to happen. It's never happened in our community and as Brian said, there are BnBs all over the community and I understand your concern. I really think it's, it's, I don't think it's founded in this situation and I think you've got someone here that's going to take care of anything that happens. I really feel it's, I can understand what you're saying, but it's, I think it's worked successful in this community. It's keeping all of our taxes down, the more people that come and visit the community. I disagree with the traffic situation and the, but I understand your concern, but I, I really think your, your concern isn't that founded and I think it will be taken...
Oh, here it is.
Steve, have we had any communication from any of the other neighbors?
Oh, we've, now we received any, any formal comments.
I think if you're not paying attention, you'll never notice that they're there.
No. Well, well, I can say too that, that over the years, my wife and I have used Airbnb, HomeAway, now it's VRBO, I think, isn't it? Vacation rentals by owner. We stayed in bed and breakfast and like Grace said, we, we go into the property, we sleep, we get up the next morning, fix breakfast, go out and do things in the community, go back that evening and go to bed. Nobody even knows we're there.
Whatever we do will only be a recommendation to the town council. You will have this opportunity again regardless of what, if any action we take this evening.
Okay, are we ready for a vote?
I'll move the planning commission to recommend the approval of the special use permit to operate a lodging house at 402 Luray Avenue with the conditions presented.
Should, should we state those conditions?
No, sir. They're here in the, I'll include them in the motion since it is, recognized, recognized
Okay, we have a motion then that's been made in second. Can we have the roll call?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Seaworth?
Yes.
Ms. Nowak?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Good.
Yes. And again, this will come before the town council at their meeting in June. The other items that we have are for some updates and discussions. Any further info on the official zoning map?
No, sir. I think we're, unless there's any other input from the commission, I think we're pretty good as far as the zoning district, the OSP, new zoning district for open space. I think we're in the final stages of finalizing the, the new map and hope to get the, the new map printed from the county soon. And then once we do that, we will schedule this for the, the public hearing as a, as a unit of adopting the new map and then adopting the new zoning designation.
We will wait until after the slip zone part four project is complete so that way that map can include those changes to all of those 13 parcels. We have, today received hand cases from a local business that would like to take care of two of their parcels, so that'll be coming up yet.
Okay, and the other item there under updates is the amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Yes, sir. This is, basically staff are requesting the planning commission's input and consideration of changes to the definition and district regulations. These are basically the same revisions that we've looked at in the past, but again, we wanted to bring them forward to y'all, see if there's any other changes, questions, things that we would want to address before we would advertise.
Are there any items we need to take a look at here?
And this is a little more in-depth, so we're in no rush to advance this to a public hearing. If we do meet, we can take a little more time just so that, again, if there's any, any items that we'd like to get it right the first time if, if we can and appreciate all of your, your review of these, these proposed changes or anything else that we may have missed as we went through these updates. So again, I don't need to have you all just review it tonight, but if you would, we'll plan on bringing it back to you for more discussion in June and then if you have any items then we'll definitely be ready to address them.
All right, any other comments or anything from the commission that we need to consider Updates on projects?
There's a bit of construction going on, the Luray Meadows project off of Airport Road. The contractor has started doing grading and is working on the pond as well as they've been directed by the property owner to, to work on a pad, so the property owner is hoping to get some vertical construction in the near future in addition to the, to the site work that's going on. Also, if you go down General Drive, there's grading, site grading going on there for the new ABC store that's coming into Luray. And then we've had, I believe that last time there was four ribbon cuttings within the town, so there's a lot of activity in Luray.
It's exciting what's going on in Luray.
Is, is that new store there near McDonald's?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I saw some grading, but I didn't know what it was.
You thought it was going to be Applebee's, didn't you? No more change.
Under the, under the chairman's comments, I just mentioned our next meeting is June 16th. And something else I thought about today, that Steve and Brian make our job real easy. We, I mean, I'm not saying anything new to us, but I'm saying it to the, to the audience out there, because we have the information ahead of time. We sometimes have things to look at a couple of months and before we come to public hearing and it makes it real easy to know what's going on.
And it's very detailed. I really appreciate that.
I'd like to say that too. The staff makes it, does a lot of work on the back end and it's...
Yes, they do.
Here, here.
Race for everybody.
You don't have that authority, Frank.
From your lips to...
You got that recorded, right, Steve? Brian?
Well, because, because what we, because what we say really matters.
Unfortunately, yeah.
We do appreciate it and we appreciate there's no tomatoes.
Yet.
Yet.
Yeah, one day.
Better watch it.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we have completed our agenda. Stand adjourned.